Okay. Okay, good. Okay. If you would, Mr. Shelton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of an addendum, we do have one item that has come out as an addendum. It was a special request from council to bring forward a report to this meeting related to snow storage at the Ray 20 complex, so that report has come out in the form of an addendum. Any questions as to why it's here? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, members, we do have your agenda before you. We do have an addendum. Could I have a motion, please, to include the addendum items in the agenda? Counselor 20, Counselor vague, all those in favor. Unopposed, and that is carried. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regards to item 15, the code of conduct complaint, New Roads is mentioned in the report, and I currently work for New Roads, and for that reason, I'll be excusing myself from that discussion.
Okay, thank you. Regional counselor?
Yeah, I'll be declaring conflict on item three and item 15. Both have to do with the potential, or appear to have to do with the potential, for integrity commissioner investigation. Although the investigation did not occur, I will declare conflict just to be abundantly safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. First item then is a presentation, Mr. Paul Ferguson, Newmarket Hydro. Mr. Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, and I will say welcome to the 2013 Annual General Meeting of Newmarket Hydro Holdings Inc. With me today is Vice Chair of the Board, Bob Betts, and Newmarket Tape Power CFO, Ian Clinton. You have my report, the Report of the President, before you with the recommendations, and I note, as I did in the orientation session, that the Annual General Meeting for Newmarket Tape Power Distribution is by written resolution. So the resolutions, or the recommendations you have before you are with respect to New Market Hydro Holdings, and then a direction with the mayor and the CIO, Bob Shelton, to sign the Newmarket Tape Power Distribution Limited written resolutions. I'll just touch on a couple of high points of the financial statements for Newmarket Tape Power Distribution. And on page one, the second last sign at the bottom, you'll notice that from 2012 to 2013, there's been an equity increase from approximately $41.3 million to $42.7 million, which is greater than the rate of inflation. So your investment is growing at greater than inflation. On page three, the income before income taxes was approximately $4.5 million, and that is according to the rates we currently have approved by the OEB. That is the income that is in those rates, so we are achieving that. And on page nine, the note on property, plant, and equipment, you'll notice that is where the equity increase is in the net book value, from $53.8 million to $55.3 million. And the other note I will mention is at the bottom of page 13, which is a, indicates a debt owed from Newmarket Tape Power Distribution to Newmarket Hydro Holdings Inc. of $2.3 million, and that represents an intercompany loan between the holding company and the wires company that pays interest at the OEB deemed interest rate of 5.4% interest. So during the orientation session, my councilor should remember that there's a promissory note held by the town on Newmarket Tape Power Distribution, and we are unable to increase the amount of that debt note. What we can do, though, is have an intercompany loan owing to Holco, which is what we've set up, and then that also attracts OEB long-term interest. So that is to the benefit of the shareholder. Those are the highlights I wanted to mention, Mr. Mayor. If there's any questions, council's free to ask.
Any questions, clarification? That's the end of the presentation. Regional counselor?
Thanks. I just have a question. It might be me not understanding process fully, but the, this is listed as a 2013 Annual General Meeting.
That is correct.
And I recognize that this is in relation to year-end 2013, or the consolidated financial statements, so for that year. But it says here that pursuant to section 104 OBCA, that all matters required to be dealt with at a shareholders' meeting. It doesn't, so wouldn't this be, couldn't you deal with that period of time, but in a shareholders' meeting of 2014? I guess this typically would have been dealt with in 2014 because of the election.
That is why, yeah, it's primarily due to the election that we would have been here. Typically, we have the Annual General Meeting in November, end of October, early November. Due to the timing of the election this past year, we didn't hold it in November, so we're holding it now, and I will be back this November to conduct the 2014 Annual General Meeting.
So this is really a 2014 Annual General Meeting?
No, this is the, right now, we're dealing with 2013.
But wouldn't you deal with the 2013 information in the 2014 Annual General Meeting?
No, well, you deal with the 2013 financial information in the 2013 Annual General Meeting.
So that's common in other practices, in other sectors to hold a...
In the 2000, when I return in November to conduct the 2014 Annual General Meeting, that will be with respect to the 2014 financial statement.
Yeah, I get that. I just, I guess I'm...
Timing.
I just, I still think it's an annual general meeting of the year you're in.
You can't match calendar year with the corporate year, and annual general meetings have to be held within, I believe it's 18 months.
Right.
So they don't have to be held every 12 months.
So that's our choice to just approach it then?
So because of the election, last fall, we were delayed in holding the 2013 Annual General Meeting.
So would it be normal, then, to have the be-it-resolve section here that includes, I believe if I'm reading this right, authorizing the mayor and Bob Shelton to sign the following resolutions, one of which is to appoint Collins Barrow, the reappointment of Collins Barrow as auditors from January 1st to December 31st, 2014?
That's correct.
Okay, even though that's all done with, they're gonna now...
This forms part of the, again, the 2013 AGM, which has been delayed at this point.
Oh, it's for the period of that, they're still reviewing it, it's not, yeah, I got you. Because that's still being reviewed by them, because it's the 2014, it's the next piece. Okay. All righty. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, could I have a motion then with respect to the recommendations of the President, CEO of Newmarket Hydro Holdings? Counselor Bazanz, the Secondar, Counselor Broom Plumley, any further discussion? All those in favor. That is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Bob, for coming all the way in. Appreciate you being here. Other members of the board as well. Okay, our next presentation is Mr. Andrew Wallacek, who's the Manager of Municipal Engagement for Canada Post. Mr. Wallacek? Provide up to five minutes? Oh, 10 for presentations, that's correct. Better than the two I offered two councils ago. 10 minutes for the presentation, 5 minutes for deputations. Okay.
Your worship, members of council, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here today. I am Andrew Wallacek, Manager of Municipal Engagement, and I'm joined by Mr. Chad Shella of Director of Government Affairs at Canada Post. We are here to talk today about changes to mail delivery in Newmarket. While community mailbox delivery has been in existence for 30 years and currently serves roughly 4 million households, we know changing from door-to-door delivery to community mailboxes represents a significant change. We are committed to working with you, to keeping you informed, and to ensuring as smooth as a transition as possible for you, your staff, and residents. We are pleased to answer any questions at the end of the presentation. So why does postal service need to change? Over the past decade, there has been a historic shift from paper to digital communications. People are receiving and managing their regular recurring bills online. In 2006, Canadians mailed more than 5 billion letters. In 2013, there were less than 4 billion. The decline is ongoing, irreversible, and accelerating. At the same time, most of our costs are fixed, and we must serve a growing number of addresses every year, which adds to those fixed costs. Less mail and more addresses does not add up to a sustainable future. The status quo is not an option. Making the decision to end delivery to the door has been difficult. At this stage in its history, Canada Post has to make difficult and bold decisions. The changes we are making are necessary if we are to secure the future of postal service in Canada. The case for making a fundamental change led us to our five-point action plan announced last December. This has included tiered pricing structure, expanding franchise post offices, streamlining operations, addressing labor costs, as well as the reason we're here today to talk about 5 million addresses converting to community mailboxes over five years. The total annual benefits for four of the five initiatives are expected to be $700 to $900 million a year upon full implementation. Delivery to the door costs more than twice as much per address as delivery to a community mailbox. Converting 5 million addresses from door-to-door to community mailboxes represents the biggest cost savings at up to half a billion dollars annually. Currently, only one-third of addresses in Canada still get mail delivered to the door. The other two-thirds have mail delivered in some other way. We understand some people will face challenges as we convert from door-to-door service to community mailboxes. We have mailed out questionnaires to every person and informed that if they require some form of assistance, to let us know. This information will help our dedicated team to gain a better understanding of their personal situation and begin the discussion with them about what assistance may be appropriate. We've talked with dozens of regional and national organizations with experience and expertise to help build on what we've been doing for 30 years to address senior disability and mobility-related challenges. As a result, we have various options we can offer at no charge to accommodate customers who will continue to face challenges accessing their mail, recognizing that every person's situation is unique, and we must tailor our solutions to individual circumstances. What we look for in a CMB site is listed. You can see some of the things that make for an ideal CMB location. We want to be as unobtrusive as possible, as close to the customers that we serve, sidewalks if available, sides of corner lots away from windows and driveways, setback from intersections to provide clear sightlines, walkways, and close to street lighting where possible. We will look at private property with the permission of the property owner. One of the advantages of community mailbox delivery that we hear from our customers is that it's the best mode of delivery to receive parcels. There's millions more parcels being delivered each year because Canadians are shopping online. Increasingly, busy lives mean that people are not home to receive their parcels, and community boxes are a convenient and secure delivery method. Individual compartments in our new community mailboxes are wider and fit more than 50% of parcels and packets mailed in Canada. Many appreciate that they are accessible 24/7, and they are much more secured with improved locks to make them harder to break into. Local consultation is very important to Canada Post. We will engage early with mayors and counselors to walk through the process, and we will keep you informed at every step of the way. We will provide information packages to residents, and we will share residents' feedback with you. We will also work closely with the planning department to determine suitable locations based on factors such as safety, accessibility, and proximity. I'll talk a little bit about the conversion process, which we are currently in in Newmarket. So the first stage is to send out a notification package to all affected residents. This includes a survey as well as the guidebook online so that they can share their views. We will continue to support customers throughout the conversion process with a dedicated toll-free number as well as an online question and answers to address some of their concerns. We will then send a summary of all feedback to the impacted households so they can see what they, as a community, have requested. The next step, Canada Post will meet face-to-face with all residents of homes immediately adjacent and abutting a new mailbox site. Once we have a chance to speak with those individuals, we will take their feedback, and if they have suggestions on alternate locations, we will consider them. The next step will be to advise all customers the future location of their community mailbox. At this point, we will then be ready to deliver keys as well as the Community Mailbox Guide. We will also send a follow-up letter to ensure every resident receives their keys, and any issues which must be addressed will be done so at that time. Throughout the process, we will be available to address customer needs through the toll-free line, and we are available to assist counselors who receive inquiries. These graphics show an example of a neighborhood being served by several smaller community mailbox sites versus fewer larger sites. So far, residents in communities such as Newmarket are overwhelmingly choosing small sites over larger ones. We thank you for your time and are free to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, clarification? Counselor 20?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Obviously, in my area, it's quite a large area that are going to be converted over to... Obviously, in my area, it's quite a large area that are going to be converted over to the community mailboxes, so I am getting lots of questions about, you know, the process and everything. Where exactly are we at here in Newmarket in identifying the locations? Have they been identified yet? And what is, basically, where are we now in the steps, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Thank you for the question. We are working with the Planning Department to submit a number of sites which meet Canada Post criteria. Our intent is to work with the municipality so that they can see where the proposed sites are and raise any concerns they may have. They may know of different utility lines in the area. They certainly know the neighborhoods very well. And as soon as we have that package available for the Planning Department, we will sit down and meet with them to look at these locations, and then we will start going out, door-knocking residents who will have a site adjacent or abutting their property.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, so you haven't submitted your plans for the sites to the Planning Department as of yet, is that correct?
Yes, what we did is we've submitted some of the sites, but then we actually had to rework a few of them. So my understanding is that there will be a number of sites forwarded to the Planning Department, at which time we will be able to sit down face-to-face to start to go through those locations.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, maybe this is more to staff than is what, will we, as council, get these locations prior to you going out to the residents?
Mr. Nohammer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess that's, you know, that's part of the identifying the process in terms of consultation and the interest of having, you know, sort of unique, specific location meetings for each and every of the two-hundred-some-odd boxes that Canada Post will be installing. We have received some preliminary information from Canada Post, sort of large-scale drawings of potential locations, but as we're hearing today, there's more work to be done in terms of specifically locating them. And, you know, we'll look forward to reviewing that information as well. And, you know, we can review that with councillors as they wish as well.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, so what I'm asking, though, is are we going to be getting those locations prior to Canada Post going out to the community and letting them know where they're going to be?
Well, I guess it's probably a question more to Canada Post in terms of how they are going to involve counsel and individual members of council in the process.
Yeah, and if I may, Mr. Mayor, we're happy to speak with you about those sites once they're finalized. There's no question about that. Part of the work that we do in Government Affairs is deal with mayors and councillors right across the country to explain the sighting process, to explain why specific sites have been chosen. And in some odd cases where there's more questions that want to be asked, we'll take you for a ride-along and show you examples of why certain sites have been selected, why others are not suitable. And I think the work that we're doing right now with the Planning Department is really key, because at Canada Post, we can go and say, this meets all of our safety criteria. We feel that this location works, here are our reasons why. What we may not know is, is there fiber optics under the ground? Is there water main? Is there sewer? Any of those types of things that obviously, those will impact some of the sighting as well. So really, until the work is completed with the municipality, we don't like to put sites out there because in the event people change and the sites change, we don't want one of the citizens to come back to a councillor and say, well, wait a minute, you told me it was going to go here, now it's going over here. And it's what we found throughout the process, that the sites do evolve quite a bit.
Okay, so I guess my concern is that we are kept in the loop and know what's going on prior to, you know, I mean, and just have, and because we live in that ward and have, you know, we're there on a day-to-day basis, we certainly are very in tune with what's going on as well. So I don't know what the processes and procedure of how that will be done, but perhaps...
But maybe we could ask staff that, number one, I think the ward councillors have very intimate knowledge of their wards and the community perspectives on those issues. And if it's possible that those sites are reviewed on a ward-by-ward basis, and that way, staff could have a consultation with the ward councillor before, to get some preliminary feedback on, and as part of that process. I think that would be better.
Yeah.
But it would be helpful for you and for us to have your ward councillor engage in each one of those sites. I think we could probably come to some early resolutions of things that we might not have thought of. Without the benefit of that input, yeah.
Thank you, I'm not quite finished yet, sorry. And then, so what is the length of process, so where are we at? Like, when are we expected to, when's the end result, I guess, expected date to be?
Are you just referring to the work we're doing right now, or for the full implementation?
Full up and running, when is the expected date? How long of a process is this, and when do we expect to be in full using the community mailboxes?
Yeah, so the implementation will take place this year, it will happen this fall. We don't use specific dates because, as Mr. Shella mentioned, what we find is often we have to look at different sites. And even once the boxes are in the ground, we have moved a few of those at that time. So because of that, sometimes timelines do get pushed back a bit. So we want to be flexible. We certainly don't want to cut off anyone who may have concerns simply because we have a set date. So we want to work with the community, and then, but for certain, the implementation will occur this year.
Okay, and thank you. And just to follow up, I guess, you know, I mean, and one of my major concerns with Canada Post is, and I'll be honest, is the problem we have with graffiti and getting it resolved from Canada Post, which is, no. And this is one of the biggest feedbacks I get from my residents, is the fact that, you know, that we don't have, we never get our, you know, I mean, the Canada mailboxes are constantly, you know, covered in graffiti in our town, and it's an eyesore, it doesn't look good. But we don't have any way of making sure that somebody is going to be a contact to ensure that it's going to be cleaned up. And now with the additional community boxes on top of that, it's going to be even a bigger problem. So how do we address this? And how do we ensure that your good, you know, like, good community partners and are going to take care of that for our community? Because I think that would go a long way with a lot of residents. And on top of the graffiti, I guess the other issue is, I think it's actually in our budget looking at recyclable receptacles near the boxes again. So, again, because that is a problem with the, you know, the extra literature being thrown on the ground or causing a mess there. So these are some of the, actually, some of the issues and, you know, and concerns are coming back. I'm sure you already hear that already.
It's the first time we've heard them, anyway.
But graffiti is a problem, and I'm hoping that, you know, we can ensure that Canada Post is there to help us out to get them cleaned up.
So let me start off by saying, first of all, Canada Post is wholly responsible for the maintenance of community mailboxes, whether that be graffiti, whether that be installation, whether that be litter, that is at our expense. It's not expected for any municipality to absorb any of the costs associated with maintaining community mailbox locations. So that I put out first and foremost. Secondly, I'm not aware that graffiti is an issue here. In fact, I'm a little bit surprised to hear that because we have a forty-eight-hour commitment to cleaning up graffiti when it's been reported. Every single mailbox has a toll-free number listed on the top of it. When anyone reports graffiti on that site, whether it be one of our employees, whether it be a member of the public, we have a forty-eight-hour commitment to having that graffiti removed. So I don't know what, I don't want to get too technical, but on different types of street furniture you're talking about, we have a number of different types of boxes. There's street letterboxes. One of the things that actually the Federation of Canadian Municipalities has applauded Canada Post on is the design and the work that we've had with our street furniture. And because of the design, some of you may have seen on street letterboxes, the postal code decal that's on the side of it, that not only takes away that blank canvas that a lot of graffiti artists like to use when they're going to tag items, but also there's a special coating on it that it's much easier for us to clean off. So if there's ever an instance where any of our furniture has been vandalized graffiti, it's going to be reported, and when it's reported, we have forty-eight hours to commit. And if it's not, because I see you're being skeptical of that claim...
Well, I already know the history, right?
Andrew Wallacek is your point of contact on this now. So if you ever have any specific location, you send it to us. You have our commitment that within forty-eight hours, it will be cleaned.
Great, perfect, I will get your contact information then, I appreciate that, thank you.
I'll give you Andrew's, too.
More importantly, yeah. Regional councillor.
Oh, sorry, if I may, I didn't mean to skip the second part of your question, which was litter. And if I may, Mr. Mayor, I guess the only thing I would caution you on, we've dealt with municipalities right across the country on this issue. As you can appreciate, Canada Post is paid to get the items that we deliver often from small local businesses into the hand of the customers. Our community mailboxes do that. Why we don't offer either recycling receptacles or garbage receptacles is what we found is they quickly become not only health and safety issues for our employees as they get filled with everything but unwanted mail. You can imagine dog droppings, we've seen syringes and all kinds of other things that end up in these receptacles other than mail. So it's not only a health and safety issue for our employees, but what we also find is that for us, when we're being paid to deliver it to residents, residents in a community like Newmarket that already have very excellent recycling facilities, the onus should be on them to take that material home and, for unwanted mail, put it in their existing recycling facilities. So that said, the reason why we've seen a number of municipalities that have looked at either proposing or actually implementing these types of receptacles next to community mailboxes, in almost all cases, they've been removed because they've found that it attracts everything but unwanted mail. So I would caution you with that, that's some of the feedback we've heard from municipalities across the country when it comes to those types of receptacles. You're welcome.
Thank you, Regional councillor.
Thanks, some feedback on that topic, I'll go backwards from there, but we have recycling containers all over town, and we haven't discontinued those. But using your logic, we wouldn't have them at all. So I suspect there's probably a way, and if you're getting dog bags and syringes and other things in them, I suspect maybe your opening's too large. I think that it's nice to say the onus should be on the resident, but I think the onus is on Canada Post that if we have paper debris blowing around, and we can say this is the reason and people should do better, but if it's blowing around, it's blowing around. If it becomes a garbage site, then I think the onus is on Canada Post to figure out a solution. And if that's not the right one, what is the right one? I guess, so going backwards then on the graffiti, you mentioned that the forty-eight hours. Is there a policy that you can send to us as well so that we actually have a paper policy?
We don't have a policy, that's just our practice. And I mean, I don't know how else other I can commit to you publicly today that we, our aim is to have graffiti removed within forty-eight hours when it's reported through our toll-free number.
Okay, but you have no policy?
I can go back and look, I know that's our directive. When it comes to customer service, that's what we tell our customers who call in, forty-eight hours.
Through to our staff, if it wasn't removed within forty-eight hours, do we have the power or the ability to remove it ourselves and charge Canada Post?
Mr. Nohammer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I don't have the answer to that right now, but I can certainly look into it and find out.
If Canada Post being as, frankly, as confident as you seem that this is your practice and you're executing it, and you're not aware of this being a problem anywhere else, if they were to agree to be in charge back by municipalities, I would assume that would enable us to.
Mr. Nohammer?
Yes, so, Mr. Mayor, I guess if we have the consent of the owner of the box, then we could work something out.
Do we have that arrangement with other utilities?
No, I, well, I think so, on their infrastructure, on their plant.
So anyway, if that could just be an area to be explored, and if Canada Post is, and I think it's great, you know, I'll be honest, it's really reassuring for us to hear that you're going to be this proactive, and perhaps we can put in an agreement, a system agreement, where we've got the calling system, residents can be informed forty-eight hours, and if not, the town can remove and charge Canada Post back, and we can agree upon a rate that's probably similar to the one you have. But at least we know then there's a backup for residents, because we have definitely, I think everybody around this table can say they've experienced some issues in this area. The locations that you just mentioned and sharing them with members of council, if you share a map with me of locations, am I able to share that with the public? Or do you want to be the first point of contact?
Yeah, we prefer that we be the point of contact, because as our experience has shown us during, already the conversions we've done so far, is that as soon as a map gets put out publicly, either through a councillor's website or through meetings or whatever the venue may be, when those sites change, as inevitably they will, that causes confusion, it causes frustration, and people come back to Canada Post saying, well, I was told the box was here. And we say, well, we haven't told you anything yet. And so while I understand the need and the desire for you to share information with your residents, what our goal is and why we choose to communicate directly with residents who are impacted, which includes not only through mail but also door-knocking for those that are affected, is so that they get the right information at the right time. And for us, consistency is very important. Newmarket is not like any other community where I'm sure there's a lot of speculation and rumors that go around about this type of a project. And so what we try to do is ensure that whatever we communicate publicly, not only is the mayor and the council aware of firsthand, but that it's consistent. And so what we don't want to find ourselves doing is trying to backtrack and say, well, I'm not sure what your councillor shared with you, but here's actually where the plans are at.
Right, so when you start going to residents, there's a consultation period before it's finalized, the plan? Or is that a final location you're providing to them?
Well, I guess, in our minds, once we've done our work with the municipality, we think that the plan is final. What our experience has told us is that sometimes we find out there are things that neither Canada Post nor the municipality could possibly be aware of in certain particular instances. And at that time, I'll give you an example. We were in another municipality, we had a site that everyone agreed upon, worked for everyone. When it came to the door-knocking process, someone came out and said, I run an unlicensed daycare facility here. That's, A, not a Canada Post business, but from a safety perspective, we were very cognizant that it probably didn't make sense to put the site there regardless of whether that was a legitimate business or not. So there is some changes that happened, but from our perspective, unless we hear differently, this is what both Canada Post and municipality agree we'd like to proceed with.
So what I'm asking you to give some thought to is the communication protocol. So that if we're not to share this with residents, but we're being shown it so that we can review it and give you feedback, then I think you need to make sure residents know that we're, perhaps you could say to residents, if you want to discuss this, once you've been informed of your location, you can discuss it, your members of council are aware of it, but we're going to ask, people are going to come to us and say, do you know? What's my answer to that?
And what I recommend is...
Because part of me says, then don't give it to me, if I can't talk with residents.
Every municipality is different. We've had different instances where some municipalities want to be very hands-on, very engaged, and others say, we want nothing to do with this. There's no right or wrong answer from our perspective, it's whatever you, as a council, feel is most appropriate in your instance. All that I can tell you is that whether it be members of parliament federally, whether it be mayors, councillors, municipally, what we encourage you to do is say, here's Canada Post's toll-free number, you should speak with them directly. Because that way, not only will they get the most recent information, but we'll know exactly what's being said to that resident. And we'll either have a ticket open, a file open, and when that dialogue continues with that resident, we'll be able to see what were they told, when were they told, who told them, what's happening. And when we get these one-offs that happen sometimes, I understand, you know, it happens, people get put in the middle of this. And I guess what we don't want this to be is an issue for you, as council, to take on an issue that is a Canada Post initiative. And so for us, we're going to make every opportunity that we can to keep you informed, keep you in the loop, keep you engaged in the process, but our dialogue will always be directly with the residents who are affected.
Okay, and finally, have we been provided, if we have, apologies, have we been provided with a map of the town? I mean, I can kind of figure, but an overall map of the town about what's being affected, what areas are not, not locations now, just...
Yeah, so in our initial discussions, we did share the postal code that we're looking at out of the depot that's being affected. So anywhere that has door-to-door delivery by a letter carrier will be affected. Those who are already serviced by community mailboxes or apartment buildings that have lockbox assemblies, those will not be affected.
So my point, though, is have we been given a map? I'm good, I'm not that good.
Yeah.
Have we been provided a map?
Yeah, a map has been shared, I can certainly send one to you if you like.
Thank you.
Might benefit for all members of council, I have the benefit of that map. Is that made available to your department, Mr. Nohammer?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, we do have some preliminary information from Canada Post showing sort of dots on a map. But again, I must stress that's preliminary based on what we're hearing today.
But no different than what's available there.
But what will show you is the affected area, that's what you're looking for. We'll share that with you, we have a map that's shaded in the areas that's impacted. You're welcome.
Thank you. Counselor Bazanz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for your presentation. Couple of questions, one relates to those of us who are quite used to the community mailboxes. I think, you know, it's a little bit like the rotary dial phone to remember what it was like to have door-to-door delivery in a number of neighborhoods. But I'd be interested in your service standard for clearing the snow away from the community mailboxes because, quite frankly, I was shocked that the other day, it was actually, the snow was actually cleared. Maybe because I've got snow on my brain right now. But I was very surprised, because usually people have to trudge through the snow and it's not being cleared. So is there a service standard we can expect for when snow will be cleared away so that people can access the mailboxes?
So I think that's a compliment to Canada Post, I'm not sure, but if it, what I'm trying to, I guess, say is that absolutely, not only is service, maintenance of our community mailboxes our responsibility, as I said before, but absolutely, snow clearance is. And I'm sure, as a municipality, you're always wrestling with the issue of snow clearance. But for Canada Post, given the expansion of the community mailbox services, we absolutely expect that by the time the next day comes for our people to not only deliver to the community mailboxes, but for residents to pick up from the community mailboxes after a snowfall, they will be cleared.
Otherwise, we can call you, is that...
Well, it's the same thing, and again, that toll-free number is there, whether it be graffiti, whether it be snow removal. Canada Post really has not only a commitment, but a promise to our customers to do a better job. And I'm hearing from you that maybe we haven't always done that in the past. All I can say to you is that moving forward, Canada Post absolutely has... to you is that moving forward, Canada Post absolutely has to put our best foot forward when it comes to maintaining our community mailbox locations, and whether that be snow, graffiti, litter, whatever, we're going to do that.
Okay, thank you. And my second question though relates to seniors and people with disabilities, and I noted in the brochure that you provided us with, that there is an option for people who have disabilities, or seniors who may have challenges walking to wherever that box may be, that they still have the option of door-to-door delivery. Is there eligibility criteria that goes with that, or does someone just call and say, "Look, I really can't make it to the mailbox, can I continue to have the delivery?" And in the experience, because community mailboxes have been around for a long time, will you continue to provide service as long as there's somebody in a neighborhood who requires the door-to-door? Or is this just something, as you're making the transition, you offer and then it's not available anymore?
We've been doing community mailboxes for over 30 years, as you said, and what you're speaking about is an accommodation process, and I think, as my colleague said earlier, what we've found throughout this is that no two situations are the same. And so really, what we haven't done is said, "Here are four or five options, which one do you fit into?" When someone identifies themselves as having a requirement for accommodation, we, again, consult directly with that person, or with that person's caregiver, depending on their level of ability. And what we do is, one-day-a-week delivery to their door is one of the options that's available, but before we get to that, and you know, there are many other options we will consider before we go that route, sometimes redirecting mail to a caregiver is an option that works for them. We've had certain instances where people say, "Just redirect mail to a family member, to a caregiver, they're at my house two or three times a week, anyway, they can bring it with them." Often that will accommodate the process, accommodate the request. Sometimes they say, "Listen, I have to go pick up my prescriptions from this facility, there's a post office there, can you redirect my mail to the post office at that location where I'm going to be picking up my prescriptions anyway?" Sometimes it's just a question of saying to them, "Look, I have problems opening the box," and we provide either trays that they can pull out, which will allow them to access it differently, key turners, which if they have dexterity issues, allows them to manipulate their keys. So yes, that is one of the options that is available, but there again are a whole host of other options, and what we try to do is find a solution that works best for the customer. We don't just say, "Here are your two options, which one are you going to get?"
Okay, thank you.
And to, I guess, to answer your question, if we are going to go towards one-day-a-week delivery, we do have a doctor's form that is required. There is an accommodation package that, if it hasn't been made available, we can make available to all of you.
That would be helpful, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Brumplin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two comments and one question. I am also very surprised with the 48-hour graffiti promise, I'll be testing that out with some requests a bit later. I'd also like to thank you, and this is coming from many residents from my ward, for the improvements for the snow removal around the post boxes, there must have been some recent changes made. However, as an observation, if you could pass along to your contractor, just to take careful consideration for not pushing the snow back onto the sidewalks that have been cleared, I did send some photos to your customer service last week. And my question from residents, is it a common practice for residents to simply return the ad mail back into the outgoing mailbox if it's material that they didn't request or want? Many residents are telling me that's what they do.
So in answer, first of all, thank you for the compliment, again, I'm happy to hear that snow removal has seen a noticeable improvement here. I will take a note back, so just not push it onto the sidewalk and make it your problem all over again. But as far as unwanted ad mail, I guess the only thing I could say is that we have a program called Consumers' Choice, and for anyone who wishes not to receive ad mail, they can just simply call and sign up for it, and they will be taken off the ad mail distribution list. It really is that simple. For people that sort of say, "Well, I do want some of it, I just don't want the volume of it," often we find those are the people that either throw it on the ground, throw it in a slot, do whatever the case may be. So, you know, it's hit and miss, I can't say that everyone does that, but yes, there's no question, Canada Post sees an awful lot of our carriers' time, sometimes just sorting through some of that mail, if it's not thrown about or taken home. It is a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Regional councillor.
Sorry, a couple of just follow-ups. So one is the snow removal, sorry to beat a dead horse, do you have a policy on that?
Again, I'd have to go back and see if there was an exact policy, I know for us, our commitment is to have it cleared by the next time either our residents or our carriers have to deliver to that box after a snowfall. I'm not aware of a 30-minute, two-hour, four-hour, eight-hour commitment to after a snowfall or not.
So if you're looking for feedback, I assume, my feedback would be, I'm pretty sure our employee base and our budget is smaller than Canada Post, and we have a very detailed snow clearing policy, so people know what it means to honor, what is your level of service, and did you meet it or did you not? And I think it would be very helpful to the residents, especially with the proliferation of the community mailboxes, to have clear policies on snow removal and graffiti, and then there's a standard, and hopefully reciprocal agreements. And again, if it weren't achieved, that if Canada Post was happy to sign an agreement allowing the town to clear and charge back costs, is another option, if that's something we can even manage, I don't want to put on staff for sure, but I really would like you to seriously take away and find out, is there a policy, and can we make this a policy as opposed to a practice? And also the idea about having, you know, providing an agreement where this can be addressed by the town, because I think it's safe to say that, while the snow clearing may be improving, there's been, there's definitely been less than that timeframe in many circumstances. So hopefully, you can take that back. My other question is, how do you handle community mailboxes for second suites? And I'm both talking about registered apartment ADUs or registered second suites and non-registered second suites.
Thank you very much. So that's an interesting question, and it's funny how many municipalities have actually commented to us that through the community mailbox program, it's helped identify a number of illegal secondary suites like that. Really, that's a concern that Canada Post tries to stay out of, that's not really our business. Where there is what we will call a point of call, or a registered address, that's what we will maintain. So if there is one house, even if there are three, you know, unofficial apartments there, if in our system it's one apartment, they will get one community mailbox. That's how that process will work.
And, wow, so how do you, has this been rolled out yet anywhere?
We've already converted over 100,000 points of call in 2014 alone, we've done 11 different municipalities, and we've announced almost a million more for 2015.
And that's not been a major issue of people having their mail combined?
Never.
So then are you largely providing four separate slots for, I mean, if they were getting separate mail before, are they getting separate mail now, regardless of the address?
Absolutely. So however they were delivered to before-
Four, okay.
So if there were three points of call, there will be three separate boxes.
So whether it's legal, illegal, whatever, if there's three mailboxes on the side, there's going to be three community mailbox slots?
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
Well, you said points of, so if there was, if the postal carrier was delivering and putting mail in Black Mailbox One, and Black Mailbox Two, and Black Mailbox Three, that house-
At the same address?
Yes. Well, that house, because there's three apartments in it, I'm assuming, will that house have three community mailbox slots?
Well, again, I'd have to go back and look exactly, but if we have three identified addresses, 123 Main Street A, 123 Main Street B, 123 Main Street C, that would be three distinct addresses, yes.
And you haven't had, you haven't had issues with that not occurring and people having their mail combined?
Not once.
Also, then it must be, typically, everyone must be separated out in terms of-
Yeah, we have had some municipalities who have been anxious to see some of these illegal suites identified for tax purposes, but for us, if an address is listed in our system, we create a new delivery method for it.
And if there is a house that got one, but there actually was two apartments there, and they wanted to, can they call, request, and make a request to be accommodated, or?
I can't speak to that directly, because it hasn't happened yet. I'm not saying that it will never happen, but as of yet, hasn't been a problem. We've had a few others we've had to deal with, that hasn't been one of them yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. No further questions? Motion then to receive this presentation. Councillor Vig, Councillor Twinni, all those in favor. Housekeeping item as well, thank you very much, appreciate you coming, and no doubt the number on the mailbox will be used more often than anticipated. Also, I believe, a housekeeping matter, I don't think we received the presentation from Mr. Ferguson, so if I could have a motion to receive his presentation as well. Councillor Vig, regional councillor, all those in favor, that's carried. So you can leave now, Paul, if you wanted to. Okay, our next item is a deputation from Mr. John Blumenstein. Mr. Blumenstein, I understand that you've requested an additional five minutes, is that okay?
That's a council's wish.
Could I have a motion to extend the deputation from five to 10 minutes?
I don't think I need as much as five.
Okay, we'll deal with that then, once we're at the five-minute mark. I'll wait till the five-minute mark, and we'll pause, we'll see how much time we need.
So as you may have read in the newspaper, I've gone through the complaint process, and I believe I've gone as far as I possibly can with the process, and really, I'm asking council to take up the matter from here and start directing it. Some council members and media have argued that what I'm speaking about today really isn't, is nothing more than a distraction from the important work that council does. But I want to refer to, in terms of retort to that, your declaration of office that you all signed on December 1st, and you made four promises in that declaration, as per section 232 in the municipal act, and two and three of them, I think, are the most pertinent ones right here. You know, it has to do with, you know, making sure that you're exercising your office in the most upfront, honest way with integrity, and that you're disclosing pecuniary interest in direct or indirect in accordance to Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. On January 26th, at a special committee of the whole meeting, this is how a pecuniary interest was declared. "Mr. Mayor, I know I'm being cryptic, but I don't know what I can say." You know, that's essentially it. There was reference to 23281, I believe, Cotter Street, and there was reference to a group, but there was nothing more than that that was made public. Fortunately, the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act lays out what should have been said.
Excuse me, just for a second, I think that reference to Cotter Street is not the matter of the report that we're receiving.
I'm speaking today about conflict of interests and-
Just a minute, councillor, let me finish. You need to stick to the subject of the report, because if it goes into other areas, you may create a conflict for other members of council, and I don't intend to do that.
Correct.
So your deputation is relative to the report that we've received, and I would ask that you keep your comments to that report.
Okay, I will be very specific, though, about Municipal Conflict of Interest Act as it relates to other issues as well, and as it relates to the Code of Conduct also. But really, what needs to be highlighted in the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act is that any member, prior to the member coming forward to speak about it, has to disclose not only the interest of the pecuniary interest, but also give a general explanation about the matter as well. So as I said before, let's not be sloppy about what your responsibilities are at council. Your Code of Conduct also refers to the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act as amended, you know, from time to time as well. So there is multiple references and where to go, when declaring pecuniary interests, or other conflicts of interest also. I'm going to skip ahead on these ones, Mr. Mayor, because as you said, I want to stick to the topic at hand, so I don't want to-
Again, that's not this topic.
So if it's okay, I'll continue with then with the children's charity.
That's the nature of the report.
You know what, Mr. Mayor, but also because I cannot bring forth the 281 Cotter Street, and we're not allowed to bring it forth to the CEO.
That's out of order, I've said that once, that's out of order.
Okay, I understand. So children's dean charity was brought forth following the processes that are laid out in, you know, by the, how to make a complaint, and I found it wanting in terms of not being able to include the information that I thought should be included in this report. In fact, most of the information that I presented in my meeting with the Integrity Commissioner was later ruled, for want of a better word, out of order by the CEO, and that's where I'm asking you to take direction, you know, over this matter, and make sure that it's being referred to. First two things that were excluded from it was the use of corporate resources policy and the election campaigns activities policy. I didn't pull these from thin air, these were both items referenced in an email from the CEO about this children's charity back in 2013. Why it wasn't given to the Integrity Commissioner to look at, I don't have an answer to that, but the CEO in 2013 thought it was relevant, and then in 2015, not so relevant anymore. The second thing that was excluded from the Integrity Commissioner that she was not allowed to consider were emails authored by John Taylor to council members back in the spring of 2013, and specifically an email from John Taylor to Joe Spanga regarding this matter. In this email, in my opinion, Mr. Taylor inappropriately lobbied members of council, asking for their support in waiving site plan fees for Maple Leaf schools. This was before any motion was tabled, or even made forth as a notice of motion or anything like that, and Mr. Taylor, in no time during this email correspondence, did he relate to council what his relationship was with Maple Leaf Public School as well. Between Mr. Taylor and Mr. Spanga, Mr. Taylor made it clear that he is asking for this, he's lobbying for this, because, in his words, he was concerned about the optics of donations going from his committee, which I read as being the charity, to the town of Newmarket. So he wanted the money that was donated to the committee to be used strictly for committee purposes. And I'm complaining about this lobbying, lobbying as part of Part III of Code of Conduct, but it's not included within the Integrity Commissioner's report. Secondly, there's an email from the clerk that I gave to the Integrity Commissioner as well, that she was not allowed to consider. This email confirmed that there was no affiliation between the town of Newmarket and the charity itself. And the reason that this is relevant is because when, in 2014, wrap-up meeting of this council term, when council was asked to speak about, "What were your accomplishments of this term on council?", Mr. Taylor talked about Maple Leaf Public School. I believe he talked about Maple Leaf Public School because he wanted to create a false association between his efforts with the charity and the town of Newmarket. It makes it easier to get donations if there's an affiliation or association. However, that affiliation wasn't investigated by the Integrity Commissioner, because she was not allowed to look at this.
Okay, now have you passed the five minutes? How much more time do we have?
I'm going to need the 10 then.
Could I have a motion to, could I have a motion to extend that to 10 minutes? Councillor Bazant, can I have a second? Can I have a second for that? Councillor Brumplin, thank you. All those in favor? Three, count again, all those in favor? That motion is defeated, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Motion then to receive the presentation of the deputation from Mr. Blumenstein. Councillor Bazant, second. Sir, a second to receive that report? Should receive the presentation. Councillor Twinni, all those in favor?
Thank you.
That is carried. Thank you. Okay, what I'll do then is I'll bring forward item number... I'll bring forward, we'll deal with items number 15 and 16. Item number 15 is the correspondence from the Integrity Commissioner. Before I do that, I'm going to invite some comments from Mr. Shelton, there were certain statements made that may or may not be accurate, and I wanted to give you the benefit of providing your perspective on this matter before we receive the report. Mr. Shelton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the report itself speaks for itself, but I did want to make two comments relative to the information that you just heard. The first one is that all information provided to the CEO's office relative to the Code of Conduct complaint was forwarded to the IC in its entirety. So just to set the record straight in that regard. The second point is, this further information that was referred to, that was referred to the IC and to myself, the direction that I provided is that we would wrap up the first complaint relative to the Code of Conduct, and the second one would form a second complaint if the complainant wished to proceed with that. To the best of my knowledge, I have not heard from the complainant as to whether he wishes to proceed with the second one as a second complaint. And the reason I did that is, the first one had taken quite a bit of time to resolve, and it was quite distinct in the complaint, and it could have been dealt with separately, and the second one could have been dealt with, it was far more extensive, and could have been considered for referral to the IC as well. So just to set the record straight in that regard.
Okay, thank you. So we do have this correspondence from the Integrity Commissioner, it would be appropriate to receive that and refer it to staff, together with item number 16, or refer it to staff, and we'll separate that, and then we can draw members of council back in for the discussion on item number 16. So a motion to receive and refer to staff. Councillor Bazant, Councillor Vig, all those in favor, and that is carried. Councilor Bazanz, Councilor Baeck, all those in favor, and that is carried. Next item then is item number 16, and that is the Code of Conduct update. The recommendations are before you. That is that the staff be directed to investigate best practices, and that the findings be brought back to us, that future complaints be held in abeyance until the review has been completed. Just some clarity on that phrase, and that future complaints follow the interim code complaint. But before I look at that, I have to say that I'm disappointed that there were certain statements that were made here by the previous deputant that was a matter of interpretation, was not necessarily projected or stated as accurately as my understanding, and the inference that there was any impropriety beyond what was put forward by the Integrity Commissioner is, I believe, is totally inappropriate and unfounded and unwarranted. And I think it's good that we go forward with this report, so that we can have a better understanding and a better definition of what is an accepted or an appropriate practice. So the better definition, I think it is better for all members of council, as I'm sure each member of council wishes to have a better understanding. I just wanted to make those observations. Can I have a mover and a second for these recommendations, just to get them on the table for discussion, and then we'll have a discussion? Okay, Councilor Baeck, Councilor Twitty. Councilor Baeck comments, Councilor Twitty, any comments? As the second.
Just, Mr. Mayor, were we not already still, we were working on our Code of Conduct, and because it was an election year? So, this is sort of a recommendation that's come forward, even though we were actually in the process of doing that, is that correct?
Mr. Shelton.
That is correct. The previous council referred the revision to the code to the new council, and if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Clerk, it was to be dealt with within the first year? Is that one of those, I think, fell into that category?
Thank you. Regional councillor?
A question for staff. It says, towards the bottom of page 89, "Code complaints related to matters currently under review will be held in abeyance as per recommendation number three of this report." Does abeyance mean that it will be held off for two or three months while the work is done, and then it will proceed? It'll proceed as being viewed in accordance to what policy, the one in existence at the time of the complaint or the new one? And I guess I would also ask, if we can define what is currently under review, if it's not the entire code, then what is currently under review, and if it is the entire code, then I assume that means all complaints?
Mr. Shelton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think I'm going to, and hopefully I'm not going to surprise the Commissioner, but I'm going to ask the Commissioner if she could speak to this. The, that, what I can say is that the Integrity Commissioner has suggested this approach, and I think it is done with other municipalities. But the rationale behind it, Madam Commissioner, if I could call on you, please?
And sorry, just to clarify, if I could be helpful, perhaps, I'm not, I mean, it's always helpful to hear the rationale, but I'm not disagreeing with the direction, so I'm not looking for the rationale as much as more clarity on what the process really is. I mean, if you think about it, it's tricky. You're saying held in abeyance, but then, so that means to be then proceed later, and under which code? And it says, "On matters currently under review." And I don't know if we have an understanding or a list of what is currently under review, or if it's the whole code, then are we not holding everything under abeyance? That's what I'm really asking.
Commissioner.
And if I can ask, Mr. Mayor, the regional councillor, now where are you seeing those words exactly, on what page is that?
The last bullet on 89.
Bullet number three, is it?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that, certainly, that, I think we heard it from the Integrity Commissioner, when she's been here previously, that it is very hard to be reviewing a code complaint when you are in the midst of a review. And so this is, it does say abeyance, it does not say that you will ignore that code complaint, because each code complaint would have to be reviewed. Now, as far as whether you'd be dealing with the new one, we have been straddling two processes since we've been reviewing our code. And so it could very well be that the IC, if she was reviewing a code complaint, would continue looking at what we're doing moving forward and what we have in place currently. And it could be that the code complaint would then be reviewed in the context of a new code. It's, I know it's, it does sound very confusing, but I think it has been confusing since we've been in this draft code period.
If I can continue, yeah, I agree, it's difficult, and I can sympathize with yourself trying to figure out an approach forward. I would suggest, though, that, even if possible, by next council meeting, if the way is to consult with the IC, but to better understand two things, which is, I think you really need to know what, if you're going to hold it in abeyance, but then judge the complaint against the code at the time, which there's merit in that argument, then there's no point in holding it in advance. If you're going to do it under a new code, it's really hard to hold someone to an account on a code they're not aware of, if the complaint is two months in advance and there's a new code. And finally, I would argue that I think we really need clarity on what is currently under review. If it is the entire code and we need the entire code, then we should say that, so that we don't have people, who knows who that could be, but people coming in and complaining that somehow we're not doing what we said. So, I really think we should try to find clarity for council on Monday, what we mean by currently under review. Does that mean the entire code, and if so, everything's, all code complaints are in abeyance until two or three months from now, or whatever the timeline is? Or is there aspects that are under review? And if that is the case, then I think it's better if everybody knows what aspects those are upfront, so that there's not questions about how it was decided. And I think the other question is how it will be adjudicated, by one code, by another, or by both. But it's difficult, I know there's not a straightforward answer, but I think we need to give it a little bit of investigation.
Would we be able to get an information report to members of council prior to council? Is that sufficient time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and for particularly the new members of council, we had a, the draft code was a brand-new document based on what was best practice when we brought it forward, which would have been, it's probably a year ago now. So, you know, certainly, it more or less looked at the old one, no longer existing at all in any form, because the language has really been updated in this new draft code. So, certainly, we'll have a conversation with the Integrity Commissioner and see how we can make it a little bit more clear going forward.
And there'll be, last question, there'll be time for all members of council to input on other aspects. I know we were already working on a draft code, but a lot has been experienced since then. Will there be an opportunity to input into other areas of consideration and to look at other codes to see how we deal with various issues?
That is, that is the intent. We will come back with the draft, and there will be public consultation. And so we're not just coming back looking for you to adopt it, there will be opportunity for you to take a look at it, because it is quite different than the one that we have now. And we will get the IC to comment on the code, the draft code, as far as best practices. So we will have that input as well.
Do you foresee yourself, typically you bring something to council, we offer areas of concern, either through email or through conversation, then it goes to public consultation, or will we just input as part of public consultation? Because I do think some members of council might, may want to input into just areas for investigation or consideration.
Sure, we'd be quite open if members of council have areas that they would like us to look at. We would be more than willing to look at that, and in fact, if you'd like, we could recirculate that last report that did go to council. So we can certainly circulate that again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? So, the recommendations have been moved and seconded, sorry. Councilor Bazanz, thank you.
I was a little slow on the button.
I'm sorry.
I'm just interested in how significant the changes are in the period of a year. And will it go beyond, I mean, some of these things are very specific, and I think specific to a current issue, but are there some real significant changes that are, you know, have come together just in the general practice world that we'll be looking at?
There have been some municipalities, you know, Brampton comes to mind, where they have had a few issues around expenses and whatnot. So there are unfolding trends that are coming, and while there may not be many, we would certainly benefit from the IC's experience and from other, she has good contact with other ICs across the province, and so I think we could definitely benefit from that experience.
Thank you. One of the things I'd like us to give a lot of consideration to is avoiding the number of frivolous and vexatious complaints that we would receive under that process. We've seen that happen in the past, even in the new term of council. And so getting a definition of what is frivolous and vexatious and should be dealt with on that basis, I think, would be an important definition that we should be able to use. It's wasteful of staff's time, and it's wasteful of this council's time, and it's also, I think, all too often used for an improper purpose. So, just an observation. And Commissioner?
Mr. Mayor, that's a good point, and the process will set that out. And it will be, you know, it has two streams, so it would have a, if it's determined to be frivolous, it just goes one way, and if it needs a more formal investigation, then it will have another route. And that will be, that is clearly laid out in the process.
Thank you. No further discussion, all those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you. I think we are now into the consent agenda. Any items that should be dealt with separately? We've dealt with 15 and three already separately. Any items to be dealt with separately? Councilor Bazanz?
Item 18.
Item number 18, thank you. Any other items? Item number 14. Councilor Twitty?
Number 12 and 13.
12 and 13, okay. Did that capture it? Okay, could I have a motion then to accept the consent items with the exceptions of item number 18, 14, 12, and 13? Councilor Hampton, Councilor Bazanz, all those in favor? That is carried, thank you. Item number 12. This is the sidewalk snow clearing. The recommendations are before you. Okay, thank you. Speaking to the motion, as the mover? Councilor Twitty?
Just a question, more of a clarification. This is, so the recommendation is that we consider the proposed enhancement of winter sidewalk maintenance service levels to include all municipally-owned sidewalks, priority given to schools as per our draft budget. Sorry, my apologies, I thought I'd written a note on here, and I can't see it now. Going to the financial impact part of it, it says that we would require five additional routes for sidewalk snow clearing. Are these because of new developments, is that what this is for, or?
Mr. Noah Hammer?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, I didn't quite fully hear your question, but as I understood it, it was, do the five additional routes relate to new development?
Right.
Okay. No, so this would constitute an expansion of the existing sidewalk clearing service to those areas of town that do not receive winter sidewalks, no clearing.
Redistribution, is that what?
This is for clearing every sidewalk?
That's what...
When you say routes, it's not specific to a street, it's a route, so, okay. And then, okay, sorry, and then my other, so my other question was, if we change, part of it was looking at just changing the way we do snow clearing, so sort of reassessing where we do our snow clearing, for example, making sure that the schools are cleared first. Is there any change, is there any financial impact of changing the way we do it, or would that stay the same as well?
So I'll start off, and then I'll ask our Director of Public Works to add anything further. But, so, this report was prepared at the request of committee and council to provide a follow-up report to something that was addressed in 2014, and that is a preferred option of clearing all sidewalks within the town, walkways and paved trails through the town, and also giving priority to sidewalks around schools, on Main Street, regional roads, and other transit locations. So, priority would be given to schools.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just clarify in my own mind, is, would there be a separate business case for just doing the priority, like the Main Street, the regional roads, and the schools, without doing all of the other sidewalks? Is there two bundles there that we might be able to consider if we can't afford one bundle, I think might be one of the questions?
So I guess that option has not been costed out. That's something that could be done, but it would take more time.
That might be a consideration as we go through the budget process going forward, so it might be a modification we might consider, if that makes it, that makes it more manageable. Is that all your questions, Councilor Twitty?
Yep, that's it, thank you.
Okay. Councilor Bazanz?
Just for clarification, Mr. Mayor, so if we clear regional sidewalks, that's at our expense? They're not currently required to clear their own sidewalks?
Yes, three, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. Councilor Bazanz, the sidewalk maintenance is a town responsibility, even though it's on a regional road allowance.
It's our sidewalk on their land. It's our sidewalk on their land, I think is the rationale, maybe. Councilor Broomplumley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The questions that I receive from my residents, for the most part, they don't have an issue clearing their own sidewalk. It just seems to be an issue with the timing around clearing their own sidewalks. So, for example, a street directly next to a school route may or may not have their sidewalks cleared in time for children to walk to school. In the event that we were to clear all the sidewalks, would there be some kind of a time guarantee regarding having that done in order to alleviate the complaint in timing itself?
Mr. Noah Hammer?
Yes, three, Mr. Mayor. Yes, thank you for that comment, and in fact, it was referenced in our report on page two of seven, that it was a very common concern expressed by residents in terms of timing of clearing of sidewalks that serve as schools or even transit locations as well. So the town's policy does require sidewalks to be cleared within 24 hours after the end of the snowfall. So the policy currently, you know, has a route that would clear sidewalks within that 24-hour period. So I can't say that in every single instance, the school will be at the beginning of the route, although that is something that could be attempted. There may be schools along the route that get cleared within that 24-hour period.
Thank you.
Okay. So, what might be helpful as we go through the budget deliberations is that the prioritization of sidewalks separately looking at the additional routes that would need to be required to cover all of the roads. And again, this will come back to us as part of the enhancement process. So, we're going to move in a second, or any further discussion? All those in favor of those recommendations? Any opposed, and that is carried, thank you. Is sufficient as a direction to staff to take a look at that bundling? Thank you. Okay, item number 13, and that's the AMI report. AMI stands for... Yes, advanced metering. Okay, we have the recommendations, could I have a motion with respect to the recommendations? Councilor Twitty? Councilor? Councilor Hampton, okay. Councilor Twitty, comments?
Just a question for you, Mr. Mayor. Staff, so this new, this, looking at the benefits of this advanced metering infrastructure, would it, it would discontinue the use of any...
would it, it would discontinue the use of any staff having to go door-to-door and getting the water meter numbers, I'm assuming, which are often in the older homes, such as myself, inside the house, which becomes a bit of an issue and then we have to send it in and, so therefore, if we are no longer going to be using staff, is there going to be, are we going to show the benefits like any, of any reduced staff costs when, would that be included as part of this report that comes back to us on how this all lay out?
Mr. Calamut?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The counselor is correct, there is currently a contractor that we use to go read the meters with this, if this project was to go through and be in place, we would no longer need their services. So that would be a cost reduction as part of the cost benefit analysis. That is correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Seconder? Any further questions? So this, we're due for renewing these as well, Mr. Shelton? It's part of our normal process or will this be a special project where everybody gets their meters changed or will this be phased in? What's the timing of this, Mr. Calamut?
To you, Mr. Mayor. We are looking at, for this project to do it all at once, it can be done within the remainder of the year once after a budget is passed. However, it may be spread over two years depending on the logistics of getting into homes and changing out the meters, but that can be, can be accomplished in other, it was accomplished in other municipalities in a shorter timeframe.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Item number fourteen. And that is the N6 Waste Management Contract. We have recommendations before us. Have motions, please? Regional counselor, moved, seconded?
I'd actually like to make a recommendation.
Oh, okay.
I'll move the recommendations in front of us and an additional recommendation that staff report back to council in 120 or even 106, let's say 150 days on, with a review of this, of service levels in relation to the existing contract or the period of the contract, with any additional information that could provide context or benefit to council.
That's an additional item?
Yeah, so basically asking for a report back to council sometime in the next number of months, which would analyze service level. Yeah.
Yes.
Exactly. Sorry, yes. Thank you.
Performance, service levels, okay.
Service level performance.
Is that item number seven?
With the existing contract.
And that, and item number seven?
Yes.
Okay, good. Is there a seconder for that? Counselor Vay. Further discussions, regional counselor? As the mover? Counselor Vay is the seconder? Okay. A couple of items from my perspective is that, you know, one of the things that's being approached or being considered and would be the standardization of service and that might be a consideration of bag limits and as to whether or not that will come back to us for consideration. I don't think any changes in bag limits have been baked into the, into the budget as yet. Is that correct, Mr. Shelton? So, okay, that's good. The other thing is, is that I think this contract on a consolidated basis had in the range of about $60 million, sixty to $100 million? Mr. Shelton?
The report indicates a million a year. The number that we used at the outset was approximately 11 million over the 10-year contract for all six municipalities with, I think, around five of that being New Market.
But I'm thinking of the gross amount of the contract, the total cost of the contract.
Oh, sorry, the contract amount, the current one was in the 60 million range.
At that time and so substantially larger. And my concern is that because this is a substantive contract, substantive contract for the northern six municipalities, I'd like some consideration given to utilizing a fairness auditor as, when you get into contracts of this size, there's the likelihood that there may or may not be disputes, so as we go through the RFP process, that a fairness auditor should be given some consideration. And then the other item as well is that with respect to a contract of this size, we can anticipate that there may be some aggressive attempts to lobby members of council and I'd like to have some consideration as to some advice for members of council, because that might be legal advice, I think that that should be dealt with separately, but to ensure that everybody is aware that there's a lot at stake here and we need to make sure that everything we do in the process is absolutely meets the test of time and scrutiny. And the best thing to do that is to have some preemptive measures that will ensure that these things take place. Counselor Bazanz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that this speaks a lot to service standards and customer service and so forth and obviously that's key, but I would also ask that, or request that there be emphasis placed in the, in the RFP to customer responsiveness, because that's one area that I think certainly I've heard from residents most is, it's one thing to have certain service levels with the pickup and the time of the pickup and all of that sort of thing, but it's also about the responsiveness of the provider when people are calling in and trying to access and answer, like are you going to come back and pick up my bin or not? That there have been some concerns and complaints raised. So I think the customer responsiveness as well as service levels needs to be something that we, we look at emphasizing, because it is, it's a very big contract.
Thank you. Regional counselor?
Thanks. To Counselor Bazanz's point, I believe my concern's covered in the report, but I just want to be really clear. I am virtually certain I have moved a motion well over a year ago, maybe two years ago, requesting that this contract be looked at, discussed whether we are going to include customer service as part of the contract or not, or that we tender it, you know, with, in two ways, but I've expressed before that I think that we're, we have an award-winning customer service center, we're in the business of customer service, that's what we do and we do it very well. We outsource to other people for other uses, including related to, ironically, to solid waste management. And it, in the absence of a full analysis, I'll just say that I question, or I would like to see more information that would build a case as to why we would outsource customer service to an organization that does not specialize or work extensively in customer service, they're a solid waste management company or companies, whoever it is in the future, when we have that expertise in-house and we have the expertise to the level where we even outsource it. And so I'm fairly certain I brought a motion before and I just want to confirm that that will be a topic of discussion and reporting through council and looking at the options or the arguments in favor of doing it or not doing it, or possibly even tendering it in two ways.
Who's managing that? Mr. Noah Hammer?
Yes, so three, Mr. Mayor, that is absolutely the case, Regional Counselor Taylor. In fact, recommendation number five does speak to staff reporting back on opportunities to improve not only efficiencies in the contract, but also customer service and that options including providing customer service through one of the N6 call centers is included as an option for providing customer service. I would ask if that is something that members of council feel strongly about, it might also be helpful to provide some direction to the N6 team that is currently soliciting comments and feedback from the different local municipal councils in the N6 community. The report identifies, you know, leaving customer service call center as the status quo, where it's operated, as you know, by a contractor, contracting it out to an independent third party, or retaining it within one of the N6. So I would answer in that way.
Thank you, and I'd be happy to provide direction, but I'm always cautious that I don't, I've brought this up in the past, but I never said this is what we should do because I don't have all the information and I want to be sure I'm as well-informed as possible before coming in. My gut instinct, my political instinct, my instinct from experience with our call center and how well we can do in other areas and frankly, the concerns that have been raised by residents with me about the current customer service experience lends me to that direction. So I, you know, if it's helpful to, you know, to, we could add a recommendation that, you know, staff be asked to strongly or, you know, fully explore the option of, yeah, so maybe a recommendation that staff be asked to fully explore the option of providing customer service through, through one of the municipal partners.
Amendment, is that amendment or just a direction?
Whatever you feel comfortable, well, I think there should be more in a direction, I think so, I think, yeah, an amendment or an addition to the recommendations, whatever you like.
Okay, that's satisfactory, just as a direction, Mr. Calamut? Madam Commissioner, or, no, Mr. Calamut, I just wondered where you were pointing, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, this report was brought forward to this council for these exact discussion purposes. As the logistics of an N6 contract are somewhat more difficult than a straightforward one municipal contract, we are soliciting comments from all of the councilors. So this sort of direction would be very much a help when I go and discuss it with the other directors throughout the N6. So if council is leaning in one direction or the other, we would absolutely take that back to the other five municipalities and investigate anything that this council sees fit to ask or any other investigative works that they are looking for.
And through you, Mr. Mayor, is the wording strong or clear enough at this point or?
I think that's why it's a motion.
As a motion? Okay, so we'll add that as a motion then. And mover and seconder see that as friendly? Who's the seconder? Does anybody remember who seconded that?
Counselor Vay.
Counselor Vay was the seconder and the mover was regional counselor. You see that friendly? Okay. All right. Further discussions, Counselor Broom Plumlee?
I just wanted to support Regional Counselor John Taylor with that recommendation. Over and over, I'm hearing residents are calling us first and then we are redirecting them to GFL. I think it would be very helpful for our residents if it was us or another municipality, preferably us, that received the information and we could address it on behalf of the contractor.
Thank you. Counselor Vay?
Approximately, I may have a time zone, approximately seven or eight months ago, we had hired, sharing the costs, I believe, with King City, an individual who was kind of monitoring and doing quality control. And I think it'd be helpful for us as a council also to get some information, some feedback from that individual, perhaps a report, to counsel about their activities and their observations on this quality, quality control. We haven't really seen anything, it's not, also this isn't an individual that we as counselors would be contacting when there are issues with the GFL, but I think it'd be valuable to us to perhaps receive a report from that individual as to what their, because it is a quality control position, so what their findings are.
Mr. Noah?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly that can be, that can be provided and to the extent that anything further can be provided, at the moment, I'll turn it over to Director of Public Works, he might be able to expand on it right now.
Mr. Calamut?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. The inspector does, as the counselor pointed out, does work for New Market, King, and Witcher-Stovil on four days a week throughout the area, this region. And that inspector also attends the meetings with respect to the N6 and the solid waste. So she does give her input, things such as updating stickers, the oops stickers, as some residents may see, on their recycling or their garbage, also working in N6 group with respect to the decals on the trucks. From what they have noticed, she is not unique within the region, there is another person who works for Georgina and Easewellberry who does a very similar job. So when they get together to discuss what they see and what they don't see out in the field, those do reverberate back to the larger group and changes are made with respect to their expertise and what they see with regard to their quality assurance and quality control. For additional reports on what they see, absolutely, yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council, yes, we can absolutely do that.
Okay.
And so the report and our conversations, I believe this position, because it is shared with the three municipalities, the staffing dollars for this position, that it comes from either a fine that GFL paid and that's how we have applied those dollars, or is it paid directly by GFL for this position? Just remind me, please.
Mr. Calamut?
Mr. Mayor, yes, the counselor is correct in the first circumstance, they are paid from monies that we do not pay GFL because of fines.
Thank you.
Mr. Shelton, did we not have the internal auditor, the shared auditor, audit the contract and contract performance as far as quality goes as well?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The internal audit service, we started out using them on an annual basis, then we went to every two years. So they audit the contract and they have also audited the performance, or let's say the management of the contract by our N6 staff.
Okay. It might be helpful if that's recirculated as well, it might be good, helpful information for members of council as well.
Or our constituents and as much information as possible.
Thank you. Counselor Twin?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I thought I had read not too long ago in the paper that Witcher-Stovil had moved a motion at council that they were going to go out on their own for waste pickup. Is that correct? Do you know any information about that and how would that affect, I guess that could be, you know, would affect perhaps our conversations and how the contract comes together if it's only five, you know, of the municipalities?
Mr. Calamut?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council, it's my understanding that when this very similar report went to the council in Witcher-Stovil, they asked staff to report back on a made in Witcher-Stovil solution to solid waste, but they have not made any recommendations to split from the N6 at this time.
Okay, so it's going to be a report coming back to them on whether they, you mean, continue on with the N6, I am assuming, or is contracted out as a single municipality on their own? Is that the report that's coming back to their council?
Correct.
Thank you. Counselor Broom Plumlee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just with regards to the original report regarding harmonization, I just wanted to make sure that you're aware that I support many of those things. I'd like to see the other N6 municipalities having some equal rules with regards to harmonization, frequency collection, types of waste collected, and so on.
Thank you. No further discussion then? The motion, adopting the recommendation and the amendment? All those in favor? None opposed, and that is carried. Thank you. I believe the only remaining item now is item number eighteen. We have some recommendations. Could I have a motion? To at least get it on the floor. Moved and seconded? Okay. Counselor Bazanz? Yeah, that's fine. If there's subsequent amendments, then that's appropriate. Okay, would you like to speak to the report then as the mover?
Yes, thank you. First of all, thank you very much to staff. We, I recognize that there hadn't been a lot of time to investigate, although having said that, I think that, that there was a direction a year ago at this time to look for alternative sites, so wasn't a lot of time this time, but, but there has been a period of time passed. And I can tell you that I've heard a lot from residents on this issue recently and obviously they were, they were hopeful that there would be a conclusion a little different than what has come out here and were hopeful that there would actually be an alternative found immediately so that the dumping at Ray 20 complex could, could cease immediately. I've also learned recently that there are some other, other issues around the recommendations that are outlined here. For example, item number two, which talks about limiting the operations to 4:00 p.m., I discovered that whether through the, the school or some other means, that, that parents have been asked or advised to avoid or help to avoid some of the congestion that happens on Brimston in the morning and afternoon when, when cars are just backed up trying to drop kids off at school. when, when cars are just backed up trying to drop kids off of, at school or pick them up, by going over to the Ray twenty parking lot, parking there and then walking the kids across the, um, uh, the parking lot and, and pathway to the school to avoid the congestion on Brimston, which I recognize is another issue, um, but when they're doing that particularly at the end of the day, when the trucks are coming in around three o'clock to dump snow, it's the time when the kids are, are walking across the parking lot or on the pathways, so that's, that's one issue. Um, I recognize that it was, um, an improvement to utilize the Eagle Street entrance as opposed to coming in off McCaffrey because it wasn't coming in right, right off the, um, residential street per se, but, um, also there's been some challenges with the trucks coming in and out when, when parents are coming in with the kids, uh, to utilize the facilities and, and I also understand that there have been occasions when the trucks have been driving quite fast, uh, to get in and out, and so that's, that was a concern that's been raised with me, that, um, also despite the, um, security fencing and signage, that there are gaps in the, the fencing and that kids find a way to get around it. So, from the standpoint of the residents, what I'd like to, to say is that these recommendations, although, um, we recognize that, that we're trying to minimize the impact of the snow dumping at Ray twenty, uh, the residents still feel very strongly that, that all of the original concerns for public safety, for, for, uh, safety of the children, uh, really aren't being mitigated, so I'm, um, expressing those concerns on behalf of the residents. I do have, um, some questions with respect to the, the, um, alternative sites, if I, if I could just ask, uh, some of the questions, um, when you talk about the, uh, the distance, is that, what distance is that, that you're referring to, is it the distance to, from where snow is being collected to where it's being dumped off, or the distance from where the snow is being dumped to residential properties?
Mr. Nohammer, or Mr. Cal, Mr. Nohammer, okay.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, uh, through you, uh, so this distance refers to basically the haulage distance from where the snow is lifted to where it is, uh, stored.
Okay, thank you. Um, then my next questions relate to, to the drainage issues, and, um, so I'm just, when you talk about the Snap-on Tools location, for example, uh, and it's mentioned it drains to storm water, um, or storm swim pond and then to creek, is that just a fact that's stated, or is that something that is environmentally inappropriate, or I, I'm not really clear if that's a good thing or, or not a good thing?
Mr. Nohammer?
Um, yes, through you, um, Mr. Mayor, so I guess the purpose of this table is to help, um, readers understand the, um, variables under which the MOE guidelines, uh, look at different sites for snow storage, and, and these are the, the criteria that are examined, uh, by those guidelines, um, so drainage is one of, one of those elements, and in, um, in staff's review of the different sites, um, the comments in that column reflect what, uh, the drainage of the snow as it melts in the springtime would, uh, look like, or, um, I guess just more appropriately, the existing situations for those particular sites, so in the case of the Snap-on Tools site, um, the drainage from that site, um, leads to an existing stormwater management pond, um, as a, as a practice as to how that site was designed, uh, and then into the water course, so, you know, on that aspect, um, that site, um, has a measure of stormwater quality treatment through the stormwater management pond, um, whereas other sites do not have that.
So that's a good thing then?
Yeah, it's a, it's a good thing to have a stormwater management pond, um, there are other things, uh, that can be done to improve the areas where snow is stored, um, and they've been identified on some of the other sites, um, in particular, you know, how the meltwater is, is treated at the source rather than having it run off, how you can capture and contain a lot of that grit or contaminants, you know, oil or other, um, other contaminants.
Okay, so then with respect to access, um, when you're referring to, um, you know, no, no current access, for example, at the, the regional land on Harry Walker, is that because the driveway just hasn't been plowed, or is it because there really isn't any, any access at all?
Um, again, through you, Mr. Mayor, so that, uh, site, uh, currently does not have any access, so a driveway would actually have to be built to access an area where snow could be, um, stored.
Okay, so Snap-on Tools, then, what, it, there's no turnaround because the driveway isn't big enough, or would there need to be a bigger driveway built to turn around?
Yes, that's, uh, that's my understanding, that the area is fairly limited, so the area to deposit the snow, um, you know, uh, would be consumed by basically the storage and there wouldn't leave a lot of room for, uh, vehicles to enter, turn around, you know, to deposit the snow and then turn around and come out again, so it's, it's fairly limited in size.
Mm-hmm.
We do have, uh, if it would help, we do have aerial photographs and, uh, pictures of some of these sites too, if, if it's the wish of members of council.
Mm-hmm, well, I, I think, Mr. Mayor, it's, it's, you know, obviously it's, it's something that's very important to, to the community that, that the practice of using Ray twenty stop, and, um, the community feels very, the residents feel very strongly that, that there is a significant hazard and potential danger to, to the public in continuing to use that site, even though perhaps from an environmental standpoint it, it meets, meets some of the criteria, so I recognize that the challenge is to appropriately balance, you know, public safety and concerns with, with environmental safety and, and we certainly recognize the importance of, of protecting our water source, but I think we also have to balance that with, with protecting children and, and, um, you know, the, the public around that, the current facility, so I would be really interested in looking at, at what kind of measures we could put in place to start immediately rather than later, to start planning or, um, uh, seriously investigating what, what needs to be done and setting ourselves sort of a hard, a hard milestone for the future as to, you know, having this alternative site in place by the next winter.
I'll, uh, I'll take a stab at trying to answer that, um, so, uh, I guess as, as members of council know, we are working, um, with the region of York on an alternative site, uh, in the Harry Walker Parkway area, um, in fact, one of the sites, the regional land on Harry Wa- Walker Parkway, um, was investigated as a temporary use just for the balance of this winter, if we could begin using it, and I guess for a number of, um, reasons identified in this table, um, that will be extremely challenging, um, however, you know, in our report, we did want to highlight in one of our recommendations that we do continue to try to work with the region on that site and perhaps other sites that, uh, we might be able to identify, whether they're on this table or not, um, to, um, avoid the, uh, case of bringing, uh, uh, removed snow to the, um, Ray twenty complex, um, so with that said, um, you know, we do have funds in the, um, draft 2015 budget to, um, make improvements to that site, to pay our share, uh, so to speak, on the, the joint regional site, to advance that, uh, property, um, to a point where we can use it, um, if, if not in a permanent basis for next winter, at least on a temporary basis for, uh, storage of snow, um, so we are committed to doing that, and there are a number of, uh, planning approvals that still need to, um, uh, be, uh, obtained, uh, with respect to zoning and site plan approval, et cetera, for that site, um, but we do want to work, and the region has made their commitment to want to work hard to get that site ready for next winter.
Okay, and, and just one, one final observation, um, in the research that I've been doing on this issue, I actually came across, uh, an evaluation study that, that highlighted our neighbor to the south, Richmond Hill, um, who put together a, a snow storage facility, and, uh, it actually has won an environmental achievement award, what I noted about this in particular is that, that they built this facility on the Oakridges Marine, which is a very sensitive land, and, uh, you know, put in all the appropriate provisions, and they've actually found that, um, that this facility is now much more cost-effective than other s- snow storage methodologies previously used, and, um, that they've actually been able to, to also use the, the facility as an, an amenity outside of the winter months for, um, a skateboard park and so forth, so I think that there's certainly a lot of best practices that, you know, it's not my, my expertise certainly and not my job, I recognize, to, to, uh, educate you on that, but I really think that this, this does need to be made a priority and, uh, some assurance given to the residents that, you know, we aren't going to continue to, to be dumping the snow in their, in their, uh, backyards.
But, uh, Mr. Nohammer, what type of milestones and timelines would we need to, uh, achieve to, uh, be able to accomplish alternate sites for the next snow, next snow season? And, and is, can we realistically achieve, um, alternate sites?
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, the, um, there, as I mentioned, uh, on the site that we're currently pursuing with the region, there are some, um, land use, uh, planning applications that do need to be submitted and approvals obtained, uh, that's with respect to the use of the, of the property, um, there are, there are some, um, uh, environmental assessment, uh, requirements that also have to be obtained from the Ministry of the Environment, and that has to do with, uh, certificate of authorization, uh, and also satisfying the, uh, class municipal assess, uh, municipal environmental assessment process, uh, for snow disposal, um, so, you know, the, I, I don't have a schedule, uh, that I can give you, uh, today, but, um, you know, we, we will work very hard to try and get that done for, for, uh, 2015, um, and I guess failing that, uh, the other op, fallback option would be, uh, some form of temporary use, uh, prior to its permanent use.
Okay, so would a six-month, uh, progress report, uh, would we be able to see some significant progress over six months or three months, or, I'm, I'm just trying to set some progress reporting, so that we can, we, council can stay on top of this, another, another thought is around, uh, you know, the, the zoning and, and, uh, the official plan amendments, we can play a part in that, and, and what does it take to expedite those, those things as well?
Yes.
So, if we could just build a timeline and some, some significant milestones, I think that would be helpful, uh, for council to have an understanding of the progress as, before we approach the next snow season.
And certainly, thank, thank you for that, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I was, uh, remiss in also, um, indicating that the region has met with our planning staff, uh, to go over the site and, uh, the various requirements and, uh, and what's needed to make sure it's up and running, not only for this particular use, but as you know, there are other shared uses on that site as well that are of interest to the region, um, so I, I think that would be appropriate to ask for a report back, um, you know, in six months' time as to, uh, the, uh, uh, status of the other site and, uh, where we are with respect to the approvals.
Okay, thank you, regional councillor?
Thanks very much, um, I, for one, I'm not comfortable with a report back in six months, that's August of next year, snow arrives a couple of months later, a progress report at that point, I just don't think is, is the answer, um, I guess I'd like to ask a, a couple of questions, I've got the Snap-on Tools in front of me on my iPad, and it appears to have at least a hundred and twenty-five parking spots, how many, it says the region's parking there, I was not aware of that, how many parking spots are occupied by regional vehicles at this time?
Is that one of the pictures up, that we can get up on this?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure exactly how many spots are being used, but I do know, uh, from, uh, a couple of the directors at the region, that, that building is being used and is being used by staff who do park there.
So, when it says very limited regional staff parking currently in use, I mean, have the, has the region said they, they can't entertain this, this, are they saying they can't do it, or are they saying there's some cars there, or, I'm just not clear?
Mr. Mr. Nohammer?
So, uh, in, uh, discussion with staff who investigated that site, um, they indicated that the, uh, parking was being used by the regional staff who are, uh, working in that facility, and that if we were to, uh, begin storage of snow there, we would essentially be using up their parking.
So the parking is in two separate entities, um, one would appear to have forty or fifty spots, the other has a considerable amount on the far side of the, the buildings, um, I, on my, on my map, I can actually see the delineating lines of the parking, and there's two separate parking spots, so they'd have to have in excess of fifty cars to even in, impact on the other side, I, I.
Well, this, uh, and, and this, you know, sort of returns to the point where, you know, we, we, the time was short in the time we were asked to get back on this, and we certainly still are trying to work with regional staff, uh, on opportunities, and, uh, to the extent that this site offers an opportunity, we'll certainly explore it, um, for this winter and, and even for next winter as a fallback position, but, um, the, the immediate, uh, answer back was it didn't have enough room to, uh, turn vehicles around for health and safety reasons, and also we would be consuming, uh, regional employee parking.
So they rejected it as a location?
Uh, did we get a hard rejection?
We didn't get a hard rejection, it was not, uh, it was something that they did not want to pursue.
Okay, well, I'll.
Mr. Shelton? I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
Uh, what I was, what I was gonna say, Mr. Mayor, is if council wishes us to pursue that, then maybe, um, some, a motion or something from council might assist, you know, if all of council wants us to make that request of them, but we do, if we're going to, um, put snow on any regional property like that, we would need their approval to do so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I guess what I'm, I'm curious too is, did, did, uh, did we investigate, uh, how much a oil grit separator costs, or what it would take to move one?
Mr. Calumud.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, an additional oil grit separator for one of these, uh, facilities, or one of these areas, uh, has not been, uh, fully investigated because they weren't, um, uh, selected, and, and they were not recommended to move forward, uh, and also some of them being on, uh, regional, uh, regional property, uh, so for the town to put it on, however, um, as the commissioner, uh, mentioned, uh, proper engineering does go into any, uh, full sum snow storage areas, snow deposit areas, so, for example, if, uh, the regional, uh, property on, uh, Harry Walker is to move forward, for example, an oil grit separator, uh, stormwater pond, impermeable surfaces, those are things that, uh, have to be looked at as they move forward, as either part of the municipal, uh, environmental assessment, or part of the C of A, if the case may be.
So I, I'll just say, um, I'll just say that I, I'm, I'm frustrated by this, I think we, uh, expressed some urgency, um, and while there was some members of council who voted one way or another, I think of many members of council wanted to see, uh, an exploration of this, uh, topic and this option, and understand where we stand, and I know that we haven't investigated oil grit separators, and we don't really know if the region's saying no because it's not recommended, but it wasn't recommended before, this was council asking to respectfully go beyond the recommendation of staff and explore an option, and it's, um, I, I don't know, I guess now it's, uh, you know, we took the to pause to come back and find out, now I guess we can make a motion now, um, to, to have staff, uh, find out, um, and I think it's very, it, it makes a big difference in how the region's approached, as a, as a, as a, as a neighboring municipal, as a municipality in the region, can you help us out on a short-term basis only with this and find a way, you know, I, I'm sure trucks can turn, I'm sure an oil grit separator is either perhaps not necessary if it's only an interim measure, especially given the stormwater management pond, or if it was, what would it take to move it, but, I, I mean, maybe we should have a site visit with the regional staff and some, you know, the board councillor, myself, and, and find out if this can work or not right on the site.
Maybe we can range that through the region, John, maybe we can help them range that through the region?
I'll make a, I'll make another motion at the appropriate time as well, that- I'll make another motion at the appropriate time as well. If that's now, I'll...
I'm also reacting to your statement that August might be too late, so maybe 90 days. Would that be sufficient time to start narrowing down some sites, Mr. Noheimer? I don't want to just focus solely on that. I'd like to explore other options. Would 90 days give you sufficient time to...
Certainly, we can report back. I would like the report to include some measure of progress on the permanent site, to update council as to where we stand on that. But certainly, it can also include further exploration of other sites as well.
So if I could, then I'd like to make a motion that, or amendment, two amendments, that we have a report back from staff in 90 days on a permanent site or a site for 2016 and/or permanent. This is, oh, 15-16, true. For the fall of 2015-16 season and/or permanent site. And another amendment, that staff be directed to ask for regional assistance and cooperation for the remainder of this season on facilitating Snap-on Tools site as a temporary snow placement location, addressing such issues as parking and turnaround. And that a site visit, if necessary, be conducted with elected officials, staff, and regional staff.
Okay, is that friendly? Counselor Bazanz, Counselor Broom-Palmly? See that as a friendly amendment? Okay, good, okay. We'll treat that all as amended recommendations. Any further discussion? Okay. All those then in favor? None opposed, and that is carried. Okay, thank you. So we didn't have any action items? No correspondence or petitions? Reports by regional representatives? Notices of motion? Regional counselor?
Just a notice of motion, that accounts. I'll be bringing forward a motion in relation to Earth Hour and our support for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other notices? Any motions? No requirement for closed session, new business? Okay. No public hearings? Motion to adjourn? Counselor Broom-Palmly? Counselor Vay? All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. 4:30?